Thank you. Trustee Lucido.
Trustee Peter Lucino, remotely from McComb Township, McComb County, State of Michigan.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Trustee Oliver here, remotely from McComb Township, the county of McComb, the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Trustee Nevers.
Present Nancy Nevers, remotely from McComb Township, the county of McComb and the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Treasurer Jolette.
Present, participating remotely from McComb Township, McComb County, in the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Clerk Posey's present remotely from McComb Township, McComb County, state of Michigan. And Supervisor Viviano.
Present remotely from McComb Township, McComb County, Michigan.
All members are present.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Clerk Posey, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
No, Mr. Supervisor, nothing at this time.
Your motion to approve the agenda as presented. So. For. Any discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the agenda. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers? Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Support. Mr. Chairman, I ask that the legal fees invoiced for both the Bodman firm be separated for a vote. Given the fact that I opposed that rate that was the $350 an hour back on November 24th, 2020, I think it's appropriate for me to be able to cast a no vote for the payment of those legal services today.
I have no problem with that. Does anyone want to amend the motion?
I've got objection. I'm in my motion. Screw that item.
Support. Any further discussion on approving the balance of the bill run? The understanding that.
And Mr. Supervisor, I would suggest you just put that on the, add that to the regular agenda for a separate action item.
At the end of the meeting, or the bottom of the agenda?
Right after this one.
Yeah, you can do it right after this one. You can address it.
Correct.
Okay. So currently, we have a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the bill run excluding the legal. Is there? Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Supervisor. Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to, we'll call it 3A for now. Is there a motion to approve the legal bills? Are presented in tonight's bill run?
Supervisor, I'll move that we pay the bill that we owe.
Support. Discussion, Mr. Superintendent.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman. I would note that the 561 hours that were expended at a total, extended total of 159,803 before the courtesy discount of 10%, $15,980 and some change, worked out to an hourly rate of 284.85 per hour, if you divide it and do the math. With the 10% discount, it comes out to be $256.37 per hour. That's significantly higher than the firms that I had suggested to be available to do that work in the interim. For that reason, I respectfully will be voting no to the approval of this bill.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? All right, hearing none. There's a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to pay the legal. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
No.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on, approval of the previous meeting minutes from March 10th, 2021. Do any of the board members have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the previous meeting's minutes?
I make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from March 10th, 2021.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the meeting minutes from March 10th. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Now, we're moving on to the consent agenda items. These are items that come before the board from time to time, and they are fairly routine in nature. Do we have a motion?
Chairman, I move the consent agenda items five through seven in your entirety.
Support. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, there is a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the consent agenda. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to public comments. If you have a public comment, please remember that there is a three-minute time limit. Mr. Ivanowski, can you please open the floor? Mr. Ivanowski, do we have anyone wishing to make public comments tonight? Mr. Ivanowski's having an audio issue. Give it a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at the participant list now, and it doesn't appear that anybody has their hand raised, just for the record.
Mr. Ivanowski? Bob, can you hear us? All right, seeing as there's one with their hand raised, I'm going to move on. Moving on to new business. We're at Water and Sewer. We have a request to approve the final balancing contract modifications, number five, 2019 sanitary cleaning CCTV investigation from Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services. Project number 0249-0162, which is a reduction of $65,939.98. The original contract was awarded in the amount of $373,187.50.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support. Mr. Wanglin, are you on tonight?
Yes, I am. Thank you, board members, Mr. Chairman. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight asking for permission to approve a final balancing change order, number five. As the supervisor stated, this will be a reduction in the contract of $65,939.98. And basically, what this amounts to is a bit of a housekeeping matter. Basically, what it is, is a balancing out of quantities over the life of this contract, which has spanned approximately two years now. Recommending approval of this, and obviously, reduction in contracts are always a good thing. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any discussion or questions from the board? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the final Pipe Tech Infrastructure balancing modification. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, Treasurer Jolette? Did I hear you? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you respond. Okay.
You hear me?
Yep, I got you. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to item nine. Request for approval to pay the final construction pay estimate, number 14, the 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning CCTV investigation to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services of $5,188.8. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. This will be the final pay estimate, number, it'll be number 14 for the contract we just referenced, in the amount of $5180.8. And like I said, this will be the final, final pay estimate, and this contract will be, will be closed out. Water and Sewer's recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions or discussion?
So I hear you. Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Is it going to be a comprehensive report done as a result of the Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services survey of the sanitary sewer? In other words, I understand that there would be a condition index or something generated to give us an idea of where the deterioration levels are in all parts of the township.
Mr. Wanglin, do you understand the question?
I do, thank you. Mr. Cusmano, the cleaning and TV, and obviously, was done last summer, early fall, and AEW is in the process of formalizing this summer's repair cycle. In past years, if you recall, we used Incitroform for making repairs and doing lining. There'll be another program coming out this spring, this summer, that'll be bid out again as a result of the work that, as a result of the investigation that Pipe Tech did last summer. So that is coming, yes, which will be obviously be bid out and presented to the board.
Just to clarify, Pipe Tech provides a report of some kind. AEW reviews it and develops a plan for any repairs that are required.
Right, and that's coming this spring, summer, yes.
There is, there is a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lucido?
I do have one question, just so I can understand how eight and nine go together. It seems like we have like a remaining balance of about $71,000 and some change. After the $65,000 reduction, we're just paying off the rest of the five grand? Is that about right, how that works together?
Correct.
Okay, anything further? So we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to pay the final construction pay estimate to Pipe Tech. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver? Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Item 10, is a request to approve the reclassification of employee 02493. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wanglin, can you give us some background?
Thank you, Supervisor Viviano and board. Water and Sewer is requesting we reclassify employee 02493. This utility worker has been an employee of McComb Township about 26 to 27 months. He has obtained his S4 certification license, as well as his CDL license with the B endorsement. And it has been past practice, normal protocol that after a two-year period, and after obtaining these two certifications, that this, these employees be moved to this, this level. And that is my recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the reclassification of employee 02493. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 11, is a request to approve, is a request for approval to purchase three replacement water billing printers, feeders from CDWG in the amount of $6,087.15. Motion.
So, Chairman, I'll second Trustee Oliver's motion.
Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, board. Water and Sewer is in front of you tonight requesting the replacement of these printers. The current printers were purchased on January 24th of 14, 2014. Currently, one is not in operation with no parts available. The other two are still in operation and have been serviced many times. Well, all three of them were serviced many times in the last few years. Water and Sewer's worked with IT as well as BPI, and have researched this with Janet Solomon's help, who is the purchasing specialist. We are recommending we purchase three printers in the amount of $6,087.15. And I might add, the recommendation letter from the purchasing specialist is part of your package tonight. That is my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the purchase of three printers. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to 12, is a request to approve the purchase of a replacement trailer jetter. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you again, board. Mr. Supervisor. Water and Sewer is in front of you tonight requesting we replace the current jetter, which is almost 40 years old. This jetter has been, it's been a good piece of equipment. However, last Tuesday night, the final piece of the puzzle, if you will, came apart and the motor is, the motor is no longer in operation. So we are in front of you tonight asking for permission to replace with a Pipe Hunter 2019 model trailer axle jetter in the amount of $69,585.0. This was specked out and reviewed by the purchasing specialists as well. And that, that recommendation, that memo is in your package as well. And Water and Sewer is requesting that we move forward with this, with this, I'll call it an emergency-type purchase, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. What exactly is the pipe jetter used for?
This would be, say, there's a blockage on Jenny Drive tonight. This would be used to alleviate that blockage, a sanitary sewer blockage.
What's the anticipated life of this unit?
Well, it's hard to say, Mr. Cusmano, but obviously, the one we're replacing is almost a full 40 years old. Obviously, with normal maintenance and repairs as needed, I would think 20 to 25 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano.
One quick question, Mr. Wanglin. Does this jetter have hot water, or is this high-pressure water only?
No, no hot water, Mr. Oliver, just high-pressure water. It'll develop as much as 2,500 PSI.
How long does it reach on the hose?
600 feet.
Very good. Thank you.
And I might add, generally, our manholes are spread, five, rule of thumb is our manholes are spread 500 feet apart.
Well, if you got 40 years on the old one.
Correct.
You taking care of that machine that long?
It's been given, it's been given a fair amount of maintenance, and yeah, the motor finally let go last Tuesday night while we were jetting. So yeah, it's time for replacement.
As a 40-year veteran of the Water and Sewer Department, we'll have a special ceremony for it.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the purchase of the replacement jetter. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item 13.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Jerry. We are looking for an authorization to extend an offer of employment to Erica Broll in the Parks and Recs Department, or as the Parks and Recs Department Secretary. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support that.
Any questions or discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. How about I let, Mr. Tabaka, are you making this presentation?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Here tonight to request authorization to extend an offer of employment to Erica Broll for the Parks and Recs secretary position. The Board of Trustees has authorized the HR department to recruit for the secretary position. This position was posted in compliance with the MATE-CBA agreement. We received 186 applicants. We invited eight. Two did not show, so we interviewed six. Sale DeCarlo and his staff, as well as myself and Sherilyn Arf, were on the selection committee. And we are recommending Eric Broll for this position. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. If approved, it's contingent upon a successful completion of a post offer, pre-hire physical exam, drug and alcohol screening, background check, and psychological exam. We're targeting effective date of hire on or after April 12th, 2021. And this is a budgeted position.
Thank you. Now, is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, is this filling a vacancy that exists or was anticipated to exist?
Yes. We have a.
She's retiring.
Retiring. Pat in the Parks and Recs Department is retiring, and we are hiring a secretary to replace her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one question. I had contacted the HR director earlier regarding the job posting, which said, which outlines that the position requires at least three to five years recent full-time secretarial experience in business environment, and that that is required. My review of the resume of Ms. Broll, which this is not a reflection on Ms. Broll or her competency, or that she's not a hard worker, her resume and her job application indicates that she's all those things, and a very good employee of the township in the Parks and Recs. However, I'm a stickler for making postings and job descriptions accurate. I'm asking the human resource director, does there need to be a survey and review of our job descriptions to keep them and modernize them to what the job actually entails?
You know, after you commented, I looked at her resume again, just to double-check and make sure, but she did have the experience on there. She had the required amount of experience on the resume.
We're in particular working for parole greenhouses.
Yes.
That indicates she develops online marketing, prepares invoices for landscapers, and processes payments, and handles issues with customers. In your opinion, does that qualify as being secretarial work?
Yeah, after interviewing her, yes, I believe so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to extend the offer of employment to Erica Broll. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
No.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item 14. To extend the temporary outdoor business application until October 31st, 2021, or until such time as the restrictions are completely removed and allow 100% in-person activities.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Mr. Box?
Mr. Supervisor, as you said, we are looking to extend the outdoor, temporary outdoor business process. In June of 2020, the township board approved a process to allow these outdoors seating for dining purposes as a result of the financial hardships that the businesses were experiencing due to the COVID restrictions. That process was set to expire November 1st of 2020. But in October of 2020, the board approved a modification to allow other types of businesses, not just dining, to utilize outdoor space if it were possible, given the property that they locate on. And the deadline was also extended through March 31st of 2021. As we're nearing that date, we're seeking to once again extend the deadline for this process. Though restrictions are starting to loosen a little, we're still not back to normal. And to help our local businesses stay open, we're asking to extend the process until October 31st, or until all restrictions preventing businesses from having 100% capacity are lifted, whichever comes first.
Mr. Box? Any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question about what the experience has been with the township with regard to the outdoor business operations. I'm not sure if I should direct this to Bob, or if just any other department heads in general. Has there been, has there been any consequences of this, of the outdoor activities that have been, you know, negative, I suppose? Or in general, have they always been few and far between?
I could chime in a little bit. I've dealt with a handful of these businesses. They, by and large, in comparison to other communities, we don't have that many that are taking, have taken advantage of this. There was only a handful. They've continued to struggle throughout, especially in the winter. They had issues with the health department. I think most of them that were trying to do this did. We tried to be as flexible and creative as possible so that our businesses could stay afloat throughout the hardships. I can't think of any real negative experiences with any of them. Some of them, we talked to multiple times, and we were able to work out any issues that we may have had with, you know, health and safety issues, or the building department. They were all just trying to keep their heads above water. But I think we were able to work through some of the wrinkles, and I don't think it was detrimental in any way to the rest of, only part of the township.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the reason I'm asking is I'm wondering if there's a benefit potentially as we move forward to loosening up our restrictions on outdoor business activities in a more permanent way.
Well, as a matter of fact, Mr. Box, maybe you can touch on this, but we have been, this has been a topic of discussion internally, and Mr. Box and his staff have been preparing some origin changes that might allow a little more flexibility for our businesses.
Yes, we are in the process of developing a temporary or seasonal outdoor business operation application that would allow, similar to what we're allowing right now for the COVID process, but for businesses to apply on an annual basis for the summer. uh, for the summer months. I think right now we're looking at probably May first through October thirty-first, uh, for businesses to apply and, and do something similar. Uh, and this would be, uh, you know, full-time moving forward, this would end with the COVID restrictions, this is something we would continue to offer businesses.
I may, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Uh, thank you, John, Mr. Box, uh, just, uh, well, seasonally, I mean, um, I'll get, I'll just be anecdotal here, but in a few cases, I've had kind of fun sitting outside in igloo, you know, eating, uh, eating in the winter and, uh, you know, would it be a, a concern of any, you know, of the township if we, if we loosened restrictions for businesses to explore other ways to engage the public in an outdoor way? Uh, like if it'd be done safely, uh, you know, if it'd be done safely, is there, is there been any thought, maybe even a, a year-round, uh, opportunity?
Well, I think what, what we've seen, you know, through the, the winter months this year, that you're right, there, there were things like the igloos and tents that went up that were successful. Uh, I do think that's something we can explore, uh, you know, having maybe a summer seasonal, uh, type application and then a, a separate one for the, the winter months. I think one of the concerns we, we would have, though, is that, uh, if, if we allowed it essentially year-round, uh, that would essential, essentially expand, uh, the capacities of these facilities, uh, and, and they may not have enough parking or utilities to handle, expand it, you know, they were, their sites were designed and planned and built for a, a set business, and by expanding full-time, uh, you know, it's not something that I would say, it, you know, is not doable, but it's definitely something we'd have to take a look at, um, to make sure that, that businesses weren't essentially doubling their size but not adding any new parking or restroom facilities or things like that.
Appreciate the fact that you've already been looking at this opportunity, because I would imagine if there's enough parking in the summer, there's probably the same amount of parking in the winter if they're having outdoor activities. So, it may be something that we could look at to see if we could, uh, you know, give that additional flexibility to businesses and to, into residents to, uh, you know, enjoy those, uh, activities, uh, you know, maybe a small silver lining to what we've had to go through is that there's been some opportunities for people to be creative in how they, uh, engage the community.
I think as we move forward with that idea, we can include you in those discussions, and you can add your own, uh, perspective on it, maybe help us come to a solution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion by trustee, or I'm sorry, Treasurer Jolette, supported by Trustee Lucito, to extend the temporary outdoor business application until October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Treasurer Jolette? Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Next item is item fifteen?
Mr. Chair, I move items fifteen and sixteen in their entirety.
So moved.
Clerk Posey supports.
Mr. Box, can you summarize these two items for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. The, the properties, uh, in, in discussion this evening are both part of the Marlberg Family Farm. They have been actively farmed for at, at least half a century, maybe longer. Uh, you know, I would look at some aerials earlier today that they've been farmed at least since the sixties. Um, the properties are currently both zoned agricultural, and they are seeking rezoning to R-one. Both properties are located on the south side of Twenty-three Mile at the intersection, Haydenreich, one, one being on the east side of Haydenreich, the other being on the west. Uh, properties are currently surrounded by R-one zoning on all sides, south of Twenty-three Mile. Property is planned, uh, in the master plan for residential development at three units per acre, which matches the R-one zoning that they're requesting. Uh, both pieces were reviewed by township staff, and all were in favor of the rezoning. And at the March fourteen, March sixteenth Planning Commission meeting, uh, they were both recommended for rezoning by unanimous vote.
Mr. Box? Is there any discussion or comment? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna read both of these for the record. Uh, we have a motion by Treasurer Jolette, supported by Clerk Posey, to, uh, approve the rezoning request from Americultural to One Family Urban located on the southwest corner of Twenty-three Mile Road and Hindreich Road, permanent parcel ID zero-eight dash two-one dash two-zero-zero dash zero-one-four. And for the rezoning request from Americultural to Residential, One Family Urban located on the southeast corner of Twenty-three Mile Road and Hindreich Road, permanent parcel ID zero-eight-two-two-one-zero-zero dash zero-one-seven. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. All right, that's the end of our business, we're moving on to Board comments. Trustee Cusmano?
Mr. Chairman, before I came to this meeting, I was doing a telephone consultation with a fellow resident of McCombs Township. She described deplorable conditions, although it's, she wasn't consulting with me regarding anything along the issues of the township business, but she, what she described was deplorable conditions of the streets in her subdivision, south of Twenty-one Mile Road, whereby she says that she gets physically ill from her car getting potholes. As, as the Board is aware, I was opposed to the three hundred and fifty dollar an hour rate that was charged by, for legal services by Bodman, based on a simple principle, and I know that the argument will be, well, saving forty or fifty thousand dollars isn't going to pave anyone's street or only pave maybe a quarter of a mile if that. However, I think that the residents do deserve to have that particular defect in our township, especially south of Twenty-three Mile Road and some of the older subdivisions addressed. And I urge the administration to come forward with a plan, whether it includes special assessment districts or any other mechanism whereby the people in those homes, which are nice homes, but the streets again are in very rapidly deteriorating condition. I'm not sure whether or not the, the requirements of the concrete that's used in newer subdivisions can be adjusted so that there's, or maybe a warranty imposed so that if there is breakdown and deterioration, that the residents don't have to just live with it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Trustee Oliver?
Uh, no, I ain't got much, enjoyed a nice one.
Oh, see, you got some. Trustee Lucito?
No comments from you, then?
Trustee Nevers?
Yes, I would just like to, uh, uh, express my, uh, uh, feelings about the upcoming, uh, Easter celebration, and I hope everybody enjoys the season and as well.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Treasurer Jolette?
I echo Trustee Nevers' comments and, uh, look forward to, uh, meeting a lot of the residents at, uh, the upcoming, uh, Easter egg bunny hop, uh, at Corners Park the coming weekend with, uh, all my, all members of the Board, so.
Thank you, Treasurer Jolette.
You are, you're in a bunny suit, right?
No bunny suit.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. Clerk Posey?
I burned those old photos.
No comments this evening, Supervisor?
Um, I would like to, uh, extend my thanks to the Bodman firm. Uh, I sent some information to the Board earlier this week. Uh, they won a very important case for us on very short notice, uh, and picked up, uh, a tax tribunal case that had been extremely poorly prepared, uh, and they won it, which was, it was part of the, was in the room during some of the Zoom hearings, and it was, uh, quite a hurtling effort on their part. Uh, I appreciate all the hard work that they did for us, and everything that we have moving forward has been greatly improved, and our attorneys that are on staff now have been diligently helping us work through a lot of these issues, and I think we've been making a great deal of progress. To address Mr. Cusmano's comments, uh, I met with some residents this week myself, along with Treasurer Jolette. We're aware of our, our road issues, it's one of the, uh, causes a lot of angst in our township, I think amongst all of us. We also know that we don't necessarily control the roads, the county does, since we're township, but we do have some participation in, in trying to work through that relationship between the county and us, and whether the residents are willing to participate with an SAD, uh, has proven to be quite a challenge, but, uh, Treasurer Jolette and I have been discussing options, and we're trying to find solutions. I can't say with any certainty that we're gonna find one that actually works, but we are certainly trying. That's all I have to say about that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll support that.
Any discussion? No, there's this motion by Trustee Cusmano, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adjourn the meeting. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucito?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Jolette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.